This special meeting of the Board of Commissioners, special meeting is called to order at 6:30 March 31st, 2020. City Clerk, can I have a call, roll call?
Mayor Hendricks?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Price?
Here.
Commissioner Andrews?
Here.
Commissioner Dowther?
Here.
Okay, first we'll open the meeting with public comment. I don't know, do we have anyone on the line for public comment?
Uh, no, we do not. We did also offer individuals for two days to email us if they had comments that they want read into the record, and we received none.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the agendas. Resolution 2020-4, City Clerk, can you read that into the record, please?
Would you like me to read it by title or in entirety?
Uh, by title is fine.
City of Medea Beach, Florida, Resolution 2020-04 COVID-19. An emergency resolution of the City of Medea Beach declaring a state of local emergency resulting from outbreak of the coronavirus disease 2019, COVID-19, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, the resolution that you have in front of you is one that we prepared after the governor had declared his state of emergency. Since then, we've had a declaration from the Pinellas County Board of Commissioners. The main reason why we have this in front of you is, you know, we're in uncharted territory when it comes to FEMA. Normally, we're dealing with hurricanes that we have two days, three days, and maybe some repairs after the hurricane that we have to deal with. But we've never had a pandemic situation that we have now. So, excuse me, in the erring on the side of caution, I present it. It's, it was reviewed by our city attorney. Actually, the language came from our city attorney, and it's pretty much drafted the same language that we see in the governor's orders and the, and the order from the county. And I just bring it to the commission for your consideration.
Okay, do we have any other comment on this?
No, I think it's well overdue. We probably should have passed it the last time. I mean, even if we want to change the language on it, we can certainly do that at a later date, but to go into this without having any protection at all is irresponsible. So, let's just pass this thing and get moving on it.
I agree. Any other comments?
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I'm not sure the Board of Commissioners wants to delegate the powers in here to the city manager alone. Um, if, if any of us were missing, or had to leave the country, or the county, or the city, or something, I, I could see that. Or if someone, one of us was ill, I could see that. But I personally don't want to delegate the power to call or cancel a meeting to just the city manager. I would like to be involved in that. I don't know what, what that does for us. There's no limitations whatsoever on the purchase of equipment, which I think we have limits in our charter, or at least our procedures. Um, I don't know, there's just some of these I don't understand. Um, and I'm, I'm wondering, when I look at the statute that it references, Florida Statute 252.38, does passing this obligate us now to make our own emergency management program?
May I, Mayor? Um, the, it references the emergency management statute that's in there that basically gives local authorities to do what they have to do to maintain health, safety, and welfare of their community. The emergency powers is dedicated usually to, like in the county, it's the county administrator, myself being the city manager. Obviously, I won't be doing anything without the knowledge of the mayor of what's going on, but, you know, sometimes there's actions that we have to take without being able to get everybody towards, towards us to get a meeting. But as to the specific nature of the order, I'd like to have the city attorney address that, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, please do.
Ralph, can you address that, please?
Yes, good evening. This is a resolution that basically has a list of things that you could do, and the language is not set in stone. You can change the language. Every city is doing things a little bit different, all the way from closing all hotels within the city boundaries for 90 days, to more minor things. Um, and some of the cities are waiving the spending limits for the city manager. Other cities are putting a, a special limit on it that might exceed the current amount. Other cities are not waiving that at all. Um, so you don't have to delegate anything to the city manager, but you can, and this is to decide what it is that you want to delegate to him. So, for example, A through G, all of those can be changed. You could add language, you can strike any of those out. The important thing is to have A and B, to declare the state of emergency and direct staff to apply for funding as it becomes available. And then C through G are all discretionary. Um, the other part I wanted to address was that we are supposed to have an emergency plan already. The emergency management plan, emergency operations plan, I believe we have one, it's on file with Pinellas County. It's been utilized before for hurricanes. Um, so every city in the state has to have one. We have one. Every county in the state has to have one. They have one. Um, this is the first pandemic emergency that the state has ever faced, so many of the city and county plans don't have provisions that specifically address the nature of a pandemic being that it lasts longer than a hurricane. Um, even in post-disaster hurricane relief, sometimes we're out two, three weeks, but rarely two, you know, three months. So, um, this is purely your pleasure. You can discuss this, and you can, it's been advertised, you can take public comment. If there's no public comment on it, you can discuss amongst yourself, and you can modify any of these, particularly C through G, to put your own, uh, own ideas in here. And every city is different around the state, you know? There's no one size fits all, and as the city manager and the Florida League of Cities has been discussing, we're really in uncharted territory here. The governor's executive order allows cities and counties to waive most procedures and statutory requirements, um, but not all, and some of the cities want to keep some things, uh, in terms of keeping control with the city council or Board of County Commissioners. And various counties and cities are doing different things all around the state. So, it's up to you.
Well, we can still limit the amount of money that the city manager can spend without coming to the commission, which is $15,000.
And that's fine, I'm happy with that.
And since we don't have to have the 24 hours notice for a special meeting, the city manager, I would think, could call us together at any time if he feels he needs to do that. So, I'm comfortable with that. All right?
Well, if I may, you're on.
Sure.
I'm not comfortable having one person be the only one, the city manager, to call a meeting. If I think a meeting is necessary, and I call him and say, "Hey, we need a meeting, there's something going on," and a city manager doesn't agree with me, there's nothing we can do. I mean, A and B, actually, on page three or four, A and B, I said, "Okay, okay." C, I said, "No." Um, why would we relinquish the power to call a meeting? Why would you relinquish that power, Mayor, to call a meeting?
May I?
Yes, please.
Can I just address that, Commissioner? There, there is some confusion between our charter and the Board of Commissioners handbook. And there's, in the, in the handbook and in the charter, you can come away with two different meanings. In the, in the handbook, I have the right to call a meeting, and obviously, I'm not going to do that without the mayor being aware of it, uh, and, and reaching out, then reaching out to all the commissioners to check availability. There's no sense calling a meeting if you're not available, because you're the most important part of this meeting. So, I think having me, giving me the right to call a meeting in these emergency times, I think is necessary. Uh, but I can do that with, you know, in conjunction with the mayor, you know? Pick one member of the commission, and I'll, you know, I'll address it through the mayor. I have no problem with that. As to the spending limits, the, you know, if we say we had a pipeline break for some reason, obviously, the flu's not going to be the cause of it, but we could have a pipeline break in the middle of the day, say, and we have to do roadway repairs or things we have to do right away, I'm going to authorize that, even though it'll be over my limit. But according to our, our charter and our code, I have to call a meeting as soon as possible, or get a meeting called as soon as possible, to have you retroactively approve those expenditures, because it's in, under emergency situations, I don't have the time to get, you know, three quotes, or do an RFP, or anything else, but I have to use good judgment, and I have to prove to you that I use good judgment in making that decision. Uh, obviously, you know, be communicating with the mayor as to what's going on, so, you know, it's, I'm not in this alone, I'm in it with you.
Then we need to change the language, in my opinion, where the Board of Commissioner is not delegating the power. How about the Board of Commissioner, you know, allows the city manager to also call a meeting?
That's fine.
To also do something. I don't want to be in a position where I can't do anything, and I think my cities need something done.
Yeah. Commissioner, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I, and Bob, maybe you can help me out on this, too. I think we just had this discussion within the last 90 days, where I think we, it used to be just the mayor could call a special meeting.
Correct.
And then we all voted on allowing then the city manager to be able to call a special meeting as well. Unfortunately, Commissioner Price, I've tried to call special meetings before, and we're not allowed to as commissioners, so, uh, these two would be the only two that are allowed to do it. So, what I said earlier, I'm not going to even amend it, but what I said earlier is I want to get something in place tonight. If we want to change the language, I, Commissioner Price, if, if you think we should scratch out C, D, E, I mean, I'm good either way. I just want to get the main A and B in there, and we can work on the other ones. I just want to make sure by the end of this meeting, we have this emergency document in place, because, you know, to be able to waive the 24 hours and be able to do the things that we need to do, we just need some kind of document in place in order to do it. So, that's kind of what I meant by it, but I'm glad you brought up those points, because, no, I agree with you. I don't think we should be waiving any, um, special, uh, compensa, not compensation, but ability to purchase over $15,000. I, we can all get together within a short period of time. We all, we're living a two-mile radius of this, so I don't see that as being a problem. So, yeah, I agree with you.
I would just like to interject, this Commissioner Dowther, that I think the, that we should limit the powers of the city manager to only things that have to do with COVID-19 pandemic, nothing other than that. I think it really needs to be stated very clearly that it's strictly for this pandemic, nothing other than that. I should, I don't think should be authorized by the city manager. You know, if it doesn't have to do with that, then it needs to come to the commission. That's number one. Number two thing I would like to bring up, what Commissioner Price was bringing up, you know, the Commissioners Handbook, we're supposed to, since this is a new commission, you've got, we've got 90 days to read, to make any changes in the commission handbook for this next year. So, the things that you were talking about, Commissioner Price, you know, we need to go in there and, and change those things, that you guys see that you feel that's wrong, or, or we need to adjust accordingly. So, we need to be thinking about that. I don't know if that would be extended out if this type of situation continues on more past 90 days, you know? But I think that's something we need to really seriously look at. So, that, that's just my input, those two things. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Under Section 5, which is the last page, uh, the signature page, basically, this agreement ends when the national state and emergency is concluded, and it has it right in there. So, um, so all of this will end after, basically, the governor says we no longer have a state of emergency.
Okay. But I have to say, I agree with Commissioner Price, and Commissioner Andrews, and Commissioner Dowther, that adding for COVID-19 only, I agree with that, and I also think we still need to be able to call our power, our meetings. In fact, I actually think the commissioners, if they feel like there's something very important, they need a meeting on, they need to be able to do that, too. So, with that change, and Commissioner Price, what was the other one you were looking at?
Well, I have a suggestion. In this document, instead of the Board of Commissioner, Commissioners delegates the power to the city manager for all these things, why don't we say, um, "In addition to the Board of Commissioners, the city manager may." Okay? Because we do need the city manager on board to make snap decisions in, in emergencies, and we want him to. I just don't want him to give up the power, so I don't know if that's a simple search and, and replace function. And then, under G, all those things that don't have limits on them, like B, C, F, G, H, maybe we can put?
You could, you could put that related to COVID-19 on all those subsections if you wanted to. You could add it to the end of each subsection.
Yeah, and it's on there.
They've, they've got that.
Right. And just?
Maybe increase the, the authority to 25,000 because of the emergency situation of it, or do we want to stay with 15?
$15,000 buys a lot.
I don't think in this type of an emergency, you know, if we had a hurricane... I don't think in this type of an emergency, you know, if we had a hurricane, tornado, something like that, we'd be under a different set of circumstances. But I think I'm, I'm okay with the dollar amount being 15,000. And if something comes up, as I think Commissioner Andrews said, you know, we get everybody together, you know, we have a quorum at least and call, call the meeting together and, and we can talk, we can, you know, as long as we're in this emergency anyhow, we don't even have to get everybody together in this room. We can do it all by telephone if you'd like. And we just have to make sure that the clerk, you know, follows her protocols and, and we record whatever we can record of the meeting. Just one thing I'm a little confused about, in this whole emergency order deals with COVID-19, it's right in the title and everything, so I just didn't know where else you would like me to have it inserted to make sure that it's clear.
I would think on C, adding for COVID-19.
Okay.
Or relating to COVID-19. And also Commissioner Price's comments about, uh, also gives city manager the power to call meetings.
Okay.
Is that, Commissioner Price, is that what you had in mind?
It is. Everywhere where it says the board of commissioner delegates the power, I think it needs to be changed or says delegates to the city manager the power to make adjustments to city business and services and blah, 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 things like that. How about, you know, in addition to the board of commissioners, the city manager also has the power to make some of these things. I mean...
Okay. In addition to the city manager, the commission in addition to the city manager.
That would be even better.
So you're taking out the who, basically?
Well, we're taking out that we delegate pa, I put a circle around every word that says delegates, delegates, delegates.
Yeah.
And striking delegates on each of those.
So that's what we need to search and change.
If I can ask a question just for clarification again. Obviously, I've made some decisions because, you know, we have closed City Hall to the public. We are still working. There might come a point where this pandemic really, you know, they, they talk about it spiking, you know, in the middle of April. Whether that's going to be true or not, we don't know, but there might be some type of actions where I might have to send everybody home and it's me here. But I just, is that okay, when you're talking about delegation?
Absolutely, because it's in addition to.
Okay.
You would have that power in addition?
Okay, terrific.
I mean, I just don't want to give it up. I've just got it.
I don't want it all, believe me. I just, I just want to make sure that I can have the, you know, the process to make a decision and obviously, you know, in meeting with you all, which we can do telephonically and everything, I'd be able to change that decision if the board of commissioners decided, hey, I think we don't agree with your policy in this particular case. And that's fine, I mean, it's...
And I think that allows you to make the emergency decisions you need to make.
Right. Ralph, did you understand?
Commissioners and city manager, there's one more thing I wanted to point out. Commissioners, there might be a need to buy PPE, personal protective equipment for our fire department, first responders, EMTs, so I don't know whether $15,000 will cover that or not. Do you have any idea, Mr. Daniels, or maybe we need to exempt out PVE equipment for our first responders?
Well, right now, we've been able to get it from the county and the county supplies it to the fire department. I think just as long as they have it, we can get it from them and, uh, I've been assured that that supply chain is open. I think if we, looks like we're going to run close to that, I can always get the commissioners together by phone even and, you know, I can say, hey, listen, this is a problem I have. Can we take this out of the parameters and allow me to buy what I need to buy? Because those costs get higher and higher as it gets scarcer. And I don't even know what it would be at this point in time, but right now, we don't have a problem. And I think the availability of the commissioner, the board of commissions would be important and, but we can do it by phone again, so.
Well, we also need to be keeping track...
Hang on just one moment, Ralph.
We also need to be keeping track of this under a COVID-19 section of our accounting so that we can go to FEMA.
Yes, we are.
And go to the state.
We're actually doing the FEMA paperwork as we progress too. So we're not waiting to the end to try to play catch-up. We're doing it at the time that the expenditure occurs. Sorry, Ralph, go ahead.
So I think I've just been making some notes on what I heard, and it's hard to hear over the telephone, you're digitizing a little bit. But I think in C, the language would be changed to say, in addition to the board of commissioners, comma, the city manager has the power to call the rest of the sentence and then say related to COVID-19. And then add the phrase related to COVID-19 on, on D and E, so it's in all of those sections. And then in G, uh, we want to put in the $15,000 in B and in C. And I think in F. And H. Unless you want to put up at the beginning, delegates up to $15,000 to the city manager the power to waive, if that's, if that's the majority of the commission, if that's what you want to do.
Yeah. I think put it right in G. That way, we're not having to put it, pick and choose between A to J.
Okay, let's put it at the very beginning, say, up to $15,000, comma.
Okay.
Yep. And Mr. Brooks, on F, will also be the, the commission and the city manager have the power to make adjustments to city business. And same way with G, is that something you mentioned?
Ralph, did you hear that?
Could you repeat it? It was digitizing a little bit.
Yeah.
Commissioner Price, isn't that what you wanted was?
Right.
The commission?
I can hear Mr. Daniels pretty clearly. He's the best one I can hear. Robert, could you repeat what the mayor's saying?
Okay, the mayor's just trying to get clarification from Commissioner Price, so hang on one second and then I'll get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yes. Section F and G also says delegates to the city manager the power to make adjustments in city business and services. Frankly, I don't know if that is something the commission ever did, but just the fact that it says delegates to you and it cuts the commission out completely is what got my ears up on that. So if F is something that the commission doesn't do anyway, I'm happy with the way F reads now.
Well, normally, if I can answer that, normally, if I was going to rent something under the normal guise, I would have to follow, you know, if it was over, say, my, my protocol is $5,000, I have to go through the bid process and I could do that up to 15 and just have those, that documentation. I don't have to bring it back to the commission, but just to show that I followed our procurement process. If it's over 15,000, I could go through the RFP process, but I couldn't execute any contracts or anything for making the purchase until it came before the board of commission. And that's what happens in the outside world. If something were to come up, though, and it was an emergency situation, again, I'm happy with the $15,000 limit because I'll come back to you. And whether it's renting something or whether it's doing something else that might come up, but that's a lot of money. And, you know, I don't think I'll be doing it, but, you know, who knows what might happen in the future? And if you all don't mind me gathering you together again, then we'll just do that.
Uh, city manager Daniels, should we put in there, as needed to protect the public, well, it's got during COVID-19, but it's got to be, it's got to be a purchase related to COVID-19.
Correct.
Right.
It can't be any purchase, as long as we know it's for that.
And, you know, even to facilitate our meetings, to make the public hearing side of it go, I consider that as part of this whole process that we're doing. Are you okay with that? So we might have to buy a circuit board for, you know, the system that puts the meeting out, the television part. I don't see it coming to that amount of money, but I'm just using it as an example, if something were to come up, to make sure that we can continue doing business and the residents still have accessibility to what we do, the transparency.
My only question now would be under F, because G, I think, is handled with the limits that we're putting on it, the $15,000 limits. F, this is...
That's 15,000 too.
Well, F is opening and closing, I'm talking about, I'm sorry, the F above the G.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong one.
On page three, yeah, which is the opening and closing facilities. Is that something we as a commission want input on? Or are we comfortable designating that power to just the city manager?
I think that's an administrative function. I think you let the city manager do that.
I think so too.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, Ralph, F and G can stay the same as far as the word And then G would have the limit put on it, and I think that's the only changes.
Okay. Ralph, did you hear that?
Could you tell me if F is changing or is F staying the same?
F is staying the same.
Yeah, the one that says about the COVID and closing the facilities.
That's staying the same.
Same.
G.
Okay.
G is in the paragraph part is staying the same. Then the $15,000 limit is being added everywhere that doesn't have it when it's involving a contract or an expenditure. Do you want to read the ones off to you?
I think also at C and E, at the very end, you wanted to say related to COVID-19.
E has it.
They all have it.
Uh, but C doesn't have it and E doesn't have it. C, D, and E, I was wondering if you want that, C, D, and E.
If you think it's necessary, I think it mentions it all through the document, but I'm okay with whatever you want to do.
I think in the future, under paragraph for section G, we should be putting...
Have a different number.
Numbers or something.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's change G, A through I, through G, one through a little dots, yeah?
I think so.
One through whatever.
Now, can I ask you a question, Ralph? Are you working on this right now, so this is something we can execute tonight?
Yes, I can email it to you and to Clara.
Okay. That'd be great. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments on this?
No.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 2020-04 with the appropriate changes or with the discussed changes.
One second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
City clerk, will you read, read that for us, please?
Resolution 2020-05, a resolution of the board of city commission, should be commissioners, of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, initiating an amnesty program to assist three businesses that rent from the city or supply funds to the city. This resolution will authorize the city manager to work with the businesses, allowing assistance up to and including one month's rent. That's the title, and I'll correct, I'll make, go in and make a change where it'll say board of commissioners in the heading, in the title.
Okay. I, um, I asked for this to be put on the agenda tonight because with what we're going through with the COVID-19, I've walked around John's Pass Village and on the beaches, I'm sure y'all have done also, and there are a lot of rental properties in Madeira Beach for our residents, and a lot of those people are in service industry, and a lot of them are out of work right now. And I'd like to see the city be a leader in giving the renters some relief. And I hope other landlords in Madeira Beach will do the same for their, for their tenants. And that's why I put this forward. Yeah, it's going to hurt a little bit, but everybody's hurting right now. We're all into this together. So I'll open the floor for other comment.
Mr. Mayor, tremendous idea. You know, all three businesses are basically, since March 15th or so, they're kind of shut down. I would even, you know, propose extending it, basically starting it and do a two-month waiver from basically March 15th to May 15th. Hopefully, by, you know, Memorial Day, the beaches will be back open and they can, they can start to pay rent again. But, you know, if you want to throw Doug's 7-Eleven onto this list too, I'd be, I'd be happy to.
Which one?
Yeah, right. I'd be happy to accept that. No, I, you know what, I mean, these guys are, you know, especially the guys on the beach, you know, the Snack Shack and Saltwater Destination, I mean, their parking lots closed. I mean, there's nothing that we can do to help those guys to get through this particular point in time. Like all these other small business owners, I tell you what, I've been on conference calls all day going through, trying to figure out what the government is providing in these small business loans. And it is, yay, I mean, it's really, really a good thing, but the timeframe that we're going to be dealing with and the ability to receive those funds in a timely manner is going to be difficult. These banks don't even have the proper documentation. And we at least want to give these guys the opportunity, if we save them on their rent, maybe they can toss a couple of bucks to their, to their employees to be able to do that. But being the leader and being in the front of this is a great idea, Mr. Mayor, and a really good move on your first day. I like it a lot.
I agree.
And you said there's really just three businesses that owe the city money regarding their rent, correct?
Well, I, I did have another area that cropped up today. We, our landlords for boat slippage that's, that's at our marina, and we have had a request come in from one boat owner that's looking for relief for two weeks. So, you know, it's, I know times are hard and a lot of the individuals that are there living on their boats even, you know, they're faced with the same situation, whatever jobs that they had, they don't. But again, I know our target was the businesses and then we have a full campaign that we're looking at getting out next week, dealing with what we're doing or what we're proposing to do right now until it's voted upon. But also, again, opening up the door for other businesses or other landlords of commercial property and residential property to reach out to their tenants and let's start that discussion and help them out. If we help each other out through this crisis, we have a better chance of survival. And, you know, I've always looked at our business community being just as important as our residential community being just as important as our tourism. And I think that's something that this is a great idea and I think we can try to build that momentum and hopefully carry it through. So we do have some of those landlords that are conscious of what's going on and can afford to do it. And sometimes these landlords, you know, they have an investment property and that's really their, their retirement fund and maybe they can afford to do it, but that's fine. But if they can afford to do it and try to pay it back, or pay it forward, I'm sorry.
Right.
And that's kind of what we're, the type of momentum that I took from you, Mayor Hendricks, is what we wanted to do. And, you know, we're going to do our own economic generation here and hopefully get some type of exposure. We're also looking as trying to do a fact pattern and, you know, I know the frustration that Commissioner Andrews is facing right now in dealing with the small business loans and other things. So we're trying to, try to get it as concise but understandable as we can and put that out on a website with, you know, a link. So our business owners and Commissioner, I'd probably be contacting you and seeing, you know, some of the pitfalls that you ran into, but, and trying to get that word out collectively as the board of commission and the city that, you know, here, we want to help, you know, check this out. We think this is the way to go at this point, but again, we know the federal government can change things in a heartbeat and we might have to retool everything again. But I think this is great. It's an opportunity that we can make a statement that we care. And I think in this age of despair, we have to get that message out that we care. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Oh, no.
I feel passionate about... I feel passionate about this.
No, I agree, I agree. I, can we have some discussion on the marina? Is that something y'all would like to...
You know, there's, that some states, three states right now, have pushed out to stay at home until June 10th. So, when you're talking about this, you know, what happens if it goes past the April 30th or whatever? If it goes out the June 10th, like Virginia and Maryland and Washington DC have done today, or yesterday, they put the stay-at-home out to June 10th. So, you know, we need to be looking at that also, not just this, not just this period you're talking about. So, I think it's something that needs to be put into discussion, or adjusted somehow, and I'm not really sure how.
Yeah, Commissioner, that was the reason why I threw May 15th out there, only because we'll be meeting before that, so we'll know by our May meeting what we're looking at, and if we need to extend that. As far as the marina, I don't know if I'm comfortable with just doing a blanket, saying two weeks off for everybody if somebody wants to petition to us, and we can take a look at them one by one for a two-week deal. You know, I think, I think the government's doing a pretty good job of trying to say, okay, people above this threshold, I mean, some of these boats can afford to do it, and we can't afford to take that big of a hit. But if there are cases at the marina where somebody lost their job, I think we'd be willing to hear something like that, but I don't like the idea of doing a blanket thing across the board in order to do that. As far as, and Commissioner Dowtherd, I'm with you 100%, I think we might be looking at a much longer timeframe than even what I'm given, but I think this gives us a couple of months, let these guys recover a little bit, and then we can address it at the May BOC meeting, and see where we're at, and see if we lift it on the 15th, or we have to extend it.
Yeah, I'm also wondering, if we look at the marina, a lot of those are pleasure boats that are, people are just using to go fishing and whatnot. There are still some liveaboards, I understand, there.
We could limit it to just the liveaboards.
Yeah, and maybe this is something we could limit to the liveaboards.
Who need it?
Who need it, yeah, on an individual basis, we can talk to them and maybe see if we can give them a break, if they can afford it. There's some folks that are, you know, they can afford it, and the city's going to be struggling, too, because we've lost a lot of our revenue simply by the parking lots being shut down. So, we're going to be taking a big hit, too.
So, do we want to add a section regarding just liveaboards in our marina who pay us rent? Could also be subject to a one-month rent reduction or forgiveness if they petition us for it, or something to that effect?
Yeah, or do we do that? Do we discount the rent? Do we cut it in half for a month?
I would, you know, honestly, I would just, I would give them a form. I'd put a form at the marina if somebody wants to come to us for leniency. I fill out a form, we won't make it a complex form. Fill out a form, we deem it appropriate, we go. But, yeah, there's no reason to give out, you know, give money away to pleasure boats and along the lines of that. And with the liveaboards, what are we going to do? Are we going to say, is it two weeks? Is it three weeks? Is it two months? I think every case is going to be different, so let them petition to us, we can take a look at them. I don't think there's a whole lot of liveaboards there, that we're not going to get 130 petitions for it. We'll probably get a handful of them, we can take a quick peek at them, and grant what we want to grant, and go the other way. But John, you're 100% correct. We've, we're basically at a standstill with revenue, too, and there's been, you know, a few years of no new revenue streams coming into the city. This is shutting down our revenue streams right now, so I think we have to be really careful on what we have to do. We have to be, you know, compassionate, but I think we also have to be fair, so.
And it's, yeah, this is a little off-subject, but if I can bring this up, I noticed the marina is padlocked. One way people are getting away right now is getting on their boats and going. How do you all feel about the marina at least being open to the people that own boats in there, to where they can get to their boats and take them out?
I thought they all, I'm sorry, I thought they all had a code that they had to use to get through the gate.
Is that the case?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, all right, good.
We just have closed the ramp at the request of the county...
Okay.
Because they're trying to cut down on the boating problems that they have on the weekend.
Okay.
So. Do you want me to craft some language here, or...
Yes.
That would cover the liveaboards?
Yes, on a case-by-case basis, is that correct, Doug? Is that what you'd like to...
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, just a quick form, Bob. I mean, nothing too fancy, just a, you know, quick one-page form, asking, you know, fill it out, ask it for leniency, and then we go from there, and for what period of time they'd like the leniency for, and then we can kind of, you know, deal with, talk to finance, and I think we can come up with a pretty easy conclusion. Like I said, I don't expect 100 of them coming in, I expect a handful of them coming in, so...
I think we maybe have 11 liveaboards there.
Right, and most of those, I doubt, will even fill out the form. So, let's take a look, and we want to help anybody that we can help, especially, I mean, a lot of them have been living there for a long time, so we want to be fair, that's all.
Well, why don't I do this, I'll, why don't we do the form, we'll get the need, and I can address it in a different resolution at a different date, and we'll pass this one the way it is, and then, you know, once we see what the need is out of the marina with the liveaboards, then I can craft another resolution for you, and we'll bring it back at a meeting, even if we have to do it virtually.
Okay, that works for me.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we pass Resolution 2020-05, initiating an amnesty program to assist the businesses here in Madeira Beach.
I'll second.
Can I just ask for clarification? Are we putting dates on it, or are we just going to do it for one month, or what, what are the changes that we're making to the, for the businesses?
Well, I crafted it for one month...
Okay.
That I would have that authority to take one month's worth of rent, and whether we spread it out over two, and it was half a month each month, or whatever, but I was just putting something down to generate the discussion, so...
Okay.
Whatever you'd like to have in it.
Okay, Commissioner Price, so your motion is to do it as written, then?
It is.
Okay, cool.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowtherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks, before you adjourn the meeting, I think I made this statement, but I don't think Commissioner Dowtherd was there, so I just want to readdress it. As we get into April, and, you know, tomorrow's April 1, and, you know, going by what they're talking about, the peak of the curve, and, you know, that the middle of the month is going to be critical, and our meeting is scheduled for the 14th. So, I don't know if, right now with this situation, if it's going to be good to have a meeting on that date or not. But I'm here to work at your pleasure in reference to that, and if that's, if the commission's comfortable with it, I can have communications with the mayor, and we decide what's best for the city at that time.
Yeah, I mean, with the two weeks out, I don't think there's any reason to cancel it right now. Let's see what develops. That's just my opinion, but I'd also like to propose something as well. You know, we do, obviously, we want to make sure that we're being very careful about the pandemic that's going on, and I'd like to obviously congratulate the new mayor and the commissioner, and Nancy for coming back as well. You guys all ran great campaigns, and your opponents did as well, and it kept, was, for the most part, kept really classy. But one thing I would like to propose, and Commissioner Dowtherd kind of alluded to it earlier, I'd like to schedule a strategy meeting amongst the new commission, the day after our April 14th meeting. Reason being, based on, you know, when I ran last year, and on my campaign platform, I had a list of a bunch of items that I promised the folks that I would address, and most of them either got shot down by the Board of Commissioners or by the former city manager, and I don't think anything, anybody wants to discuss should ever be poo-pooed away. I think everything's pretty important to discuss. But I'd like a consensus to do this, you know, maybe we do it at noon, bring in some lunch, and let's get a little direction, so we can kick off this commission and kind of get us in the right direction from the start, because, you know, there's a lot of pending issues out there, there's a lot of things that, judging by the platforms that you guys ran on, that I think we want to make sure that we look at going forward, but... Wow, little feedback there. But it also gives us two weeks to get our thoughts together, gather some info, you know, do some records requests, and we've got a lot of work to do. And I think that, you know, with the city being at a little bit of a standstill right now, it certainly gives us some time to really address what direction we want to go in, get us all kind of at least thinking on, you know, everybody know where everybody stands, so that we're not, you know, battling up here. I mean, the only agendas that should be going forward are what, you know, the agenda, what's best for the city, and hopefully that's everybody's status and how everybody wants to go forward. So, I would just like a consensus to see if we can put together, and Clara, I don't know if you can do that, put together a meeting on, I guess, April 15th. Nobody's got to do their taxes, so that's a good thing. April 15th, maybe at noon, and we can spread out in here, and, you know, just kind of batter down some issues that are going on, and see what stance and what direction we want to go in.
Mayor, I have listed on the April 14th meeting for you all to set your, set the priorities and goals and objectives for the 2021 year. Do you want to just add, include that into the strategic planning session?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, my suggestion would be yes, and we could also take a look at the handbook, too. I mean, because we have to, by law, review the handbook in the first 90 days, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we could knock that all out in an afternoon, I think we could get at least on the same page, knock out the handbook, and again, it gives us two weeks to prepare, so we're not being rushed by the end of the week, we have to get this done.
Okay, that's fine with me, as long as it's fine with everyone else. I, and thanks for your guidance on that. Commissioner Andrews?
Thank you.
Yes, did we decide on the 14th?
14th.
15th.
And I think the taxes were changed to May 15th.
Thank goodness.
May 15th for that.
So, that's the 15th at noon?
And we'll, the clerk's office will provide lunch and everything, we'll have a good session.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else? Commissioner Dowtherd, did you hear us on that?
Hang on, John. Bear with me just one minute. Okay, you should be good now.
Okay, I just wanted to say two things. Number one, I wanted to say, congratulations to Mayor Hendricks and Commissioner Price. I am not able to attend the meetings until this is over, because I'm in three high-risk categories that I, so I should not be going to meetings because of the three high-risk categories that I am presently in. So, I will be attending by television and telephone, but that's what I've got to do for my safety at this point. So, I just wanted to give you all a heads up, and once again, congratulations, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners at Madeira Beach.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Dowtherd. I look forward to working with you. Thank you. With all that being said, I adjourn this meeting.